The five. Dutch, Tom, everyone, you're all 100% right. How did we get to this point? It remains, it's up to us to figure it out and correct it. But Dutch, you're exactly right. We, we worked in, we operated in haste by closing that on. Just a second. What we're going to decide to do with it remains to be seen, but I think they're, they're all right. It's, it's, it shouldn't have been gated off because it's not legal, I think. From what you've told us, if that's the case, then, then we're wrong. But we were wrong to make it what it is to begin with. And, and like Hank said, he's only one of five. We all should, we all need to take responsibility for what happened up there without our approval. Okay. It wasn't supposed to be like that. It wasn't supposed to be made from a class four road. Or I should say, it wasn't supposed to have been upgraded from a class four road to now it's a, it's a status of a class three. We did not authorize that. But that being said, I guess we need to brainstorm what needs to be done with it to make as many people happy as we possibly can. Whether it meets, whether you all will come out of this happy, I don't know yet. And, and it's going to be a difficult process, but.
But David, having said that, I think it appears that the board used the proper procedure to do what we've done.
Yeah.
We will now take the correct procedure, revisit the area situation, and do as best to correct it satisfactorily. All again.
In the end, the board decided to deconstruct the road back to its original status. This would make the road impassable again, and the gates would no longer be needed. However, this decision would never be implemented as the situation suddenly plunged into disorder and chaos. Rumors were widespread indicating that the select board had privately authorized the action, but now wanted to reprimand the highway crew. The dead end signs on the road were sprayed with bullet holes. A misleading article ridiculing the select board was published in the local papers, and at least one person threatened to sue the town. The board withdrew its road deconstruction decision at its next meeting and replaced it with a new one. The new decision called for the strategic placement of three water bars with the promise that they would eliminate the traffic. This new motion ultimately proves to have been a deceptive scheme. The water bars were fake and ineffective and quickly vanished. However, three sets of bumps on the road signs have remained in place. Traffic counts were conducted, but phone calls were made encouraging the public to boycott the road during the traffic count study conducted by the chief of police. We challenged that these misconducts are complaints were acknowledged but dismissed. One select man deviated from the rest at an enormous personal risk to properly inform the public. The Vermont Open Meeting Law Executive Session had been knowingly abused to keep pertinent information away from the public while the public was routinely misinformed through gossip. This select man made a 12-minute presentation, and this is how it began.
I've been, I've been given this a lot of thought, Hank, and, and I I want to try to bring some of the facts that we've discussed on this whole topic in a row to put them in on a minute so it's your public knowledge. And I'm, I'm trying to wrestle with keeping with the integrity of, of executive session. And I think I can do this, but I think it's important that the public, especially the taxpayers, understand some of the decisions that we've made and where we're going with it because there's so much rumors, whatever you want to call it, floating around over this debacle that it's, it's, it's not fair to the process to have all these rumors get mushed up and, and just muddy the waters. That's my opinion.
And this is how he concluded his presentation.
I know I'm not going to be supportive, but I, I call for this board to act and ask for resignation and terminate this contract.
Okay. We'll, we'll talk about it. I won't present it.
It's not easy to do, to face some of this stuff, but I just can't let it go on without just as a board member for the town of Pittsburgh, it's one word. The public needs to know this, and you can't just pass this off as nothing ever happened because something has happened and it needs to be addressed. And I don't think we've done it.
This select man fought for 20 months, pulling every chain he could in pursuit of truth and justice. He did not seek reelection, but ensured that the individual who replaced them was properly informed about the facts of this case. A locally born and raised Vermonter and a retired general electric employee of the local plant, he was a tower of integrity and courage, and so have been our friends and neighbors as we have battled this issue for the past five years. In short, 48% of the town's annual gravel budget allocation plus the associated labor, equipment, and various other expenses were needlessly abused over a 14-month period to construct the road without proper justification, authority, and procedures. And now hundreds of times more public resources than ever before are being expended for maintaining and expanding this road for no practical or just reasons. We installed a camera system capturing over 100,000 video recordings over the span of 30 months. Our recordings have been timestamped, viewed with comments and logged. The video analysis also allows for estimating the operational expense of maintaining this impractical road. We invested heavily in the system and other data gathering operations because of the repeated manipulations, abuses, and public disinformation. To summarize, we have lost our privacy and security, and we have been at constant risk. Our three massive sugar maples, each diameters exceeding 36 inches, are all gone. These were majestic trees and very special to us and our neighbors who enjoyed them for their beauty and tapped them for their syrup. They also made the road more safe and secure. The road has been scraped many times and shaved down by multiple feet to allow for a two-lane highway. As a result, our apple trees are all dead or dying due to the road salt and massive erosion. Our primary garden and its playground has been taken over by the invading vehicles. A vehicle can breach our living space at any moment, and the town management is aware, but this danger has been ignored. Our secondary garden, which we were forced to develop and expand despite of its many inconveniences and traffic risks, is now at the risk of being contaminated. Our home was designed and built for tranquility with a spectacular view. It sits 85 feet above the pond, and it's held up by a series of retaining walls, including a 210-foot front wall. The house has been structurally damaged, and it's at risk. The dead-end signs have been removed, and the Google Maps and GPS have been altered to indicate the road is open. The road has become a shortcut and scenic drive. We've had as many as nine turnarounds in our driveway in a single day. In a nutshell, the road alteration has invalidated our years of efforts, investments, and our relocation to Vermont. We continue to reach out for a solution, but also to raise awareness of a problem which impacts every taxpayer. The source of the problem begins with a huge sum of federal, state, and local funds in the hands of a few who are allowed to make deals. These funds should not have been allocated because of the indisputable and absolute lack of federal compliance. Furthermore, there is absolutely no infrastructure in place to properly manage and control the funds or the people who abuse them. The result has been systematic robbing of individuals' rights and prosperity while many individuals, organizations, and elected officials have proffered. The ultimate economic cost to the taxpayers is so massive and mostly unrecognized that we see it as our duty and responsibility to quantify and reveal this enormous cost. We have avoided disclosing much critical information to mitigate further risks and retaliations that possess a huge sum of data to prove our allegations. This is Rula Maradi, and thank you for taking the time to hear our story. We can reach regarding this issue at road.vermont@gmail.com. My objective over the next few minutes is to demonstrate the followings. One, this road alteration was a bad idea and a major public disservice. Two, maintaining it will continue to cause more financial hardships and risk lives. Three, the true economic impact of this adventure on the community is massive, but has been ignored. For more than four decades, a section of the road in pink was impassable, and Google Maps and GPS considered this section of the road missing. Google Maps and the Vermont Trail Finder considered this missing section even unfit for hiking. The blue section was improved for our house, and it was consistently 12 to 13 feet wide. Dead-end signs on both ends of this road had always been in place. We have read the select board meeting minutes going all the way back to 1965, and no one had ever requested altering this road primarily because several alternative roads, including the orange road, had been available. This orange road is only one mile longer, but has always been a solid two-lane highway with a paved portion making the journey from one end to the other faster and safer, particularly in an emergency. Here's a satellite view of the pink and blue section of the road prior to the road construction. And here is a close-up view of the missing section. This section was secretly constructed over a 14-month period. There's a satellite view right after the road construction. Again, here's before and after the road construction. There's only been one case of an emergency vehicle using this road during our 30 months of video recordings. We couldn't confirm the destination of this vehicle because of privacy reasons, but we know the vehicle made it to the other end. This vehicle would have made it faster with less risk using the orange route. The vehicle would have run into serious delays had it met an oncoming vehicle or any other impediments along the pink section. Today, and after five and a half years of road expansion and maintenance, the pink section, which is 80% of the total road, is still a single-lane road, while the blue section has become a two-lane highway, enticing some drivers to speed up on the blue to make up for the lost time on the pink. The public has repeatedly been told that the road alteration was done for public safety, and in fact, this initiative was presented at the annual town hall meeting as a major safety accomplishment, but where is the evidence? I donated 15 months of my time during 2016 and 17, leading Pittsburgh's Economic Development Initiative in conjunction with the Vermont Futures Project and the Vermont League of Cities and Town. In conclusion, I gained agreement from the town leadership to adopt a comprehensive change, and I personally committed to donate 200 days annually for the next three years to achieve this change. A road adventure occurred two weeks later, and I withdrew my commitment so that I could focus my energy on this road. According to the above study, this road exploit has already cost the taxpayers multimillion dollars over and above the costs we can normally account for, which are the operating expenses. This is the cost of not being focused on what the public needs, namely food, shelter, and good jobs, and not providing our people and businesses with competitive advantages by lowering their effective taxes and minimizing foreclosures, tax areas, and business failures. To summarize, we purchased our home primarily for its dead-end road feature. We then purchased the only available plot of land in this vicinity, which had been permitted for a new home, but kept it as raw land to have one fewer vehicle on this road. We invested heavily renovating our new home over the next four years. The work involved the replacement of five roofs and well over 100 gallons of paint and stain. The road alteration has invalidated our efforts, though we're confident and determined to bring this ordeal to a successful resolution. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight.
Anyone have any questions for Rula?
Thank you.
So I guess I'll, I'll ask you the same thing I asked you when we met. What is it you would like us to do?
Well, for one thing, we're totally unsafe. I mean, this is probably the biggest thing we need. You're not going to bring back our apple trees or sugar maples. Safety is important. We expect that the town can and will take care of some of the road, I can't describe it, scraping that continues to provoke, to, to do a lot of runoff, and we've got sand and stuff from the road all the way to, you know, half of our meadow. We, we suspect there are things that could be done, you guys are pro, to fix it so that it's strong on that side.
If you're getting a runoff on your side, it's a major issue.
The road's too flat.
There's no way to discharge, adapt to signal.
Well, I, I haven't made it up. I was going to get up there. I haven't made it up there yet, but.
I mean, they have, we've got records. Time after time, they come in, they use all these heavy equipment, they dig out, and then it's just.
Oh, I saw one of the pictures where it was just kind of running on the opposite side of where your house is.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of.
Well, they're, they're going on both sides.
So it looks like it's. Yeah, we'll have to look at it. I mean, that part, you know.
Yeah.
I would think we could grade, you know, change the grade of the road so that it doesn't run on your property. One would think, and I mean, there's money for stone-lined ditches and that kind of stuff. Cleaning out that ditch and putting a good ditch on the other side, stone lining it.
So the water runs on that.
So getting the road so it goes that way, there's, that's, you know. Doesn't bring back your trees, but it would at least.
Well, the, the most important thing is how are you going to fix? The cars coming at us, at us constantly. One of the suggestions at the time was to reroute the road. I mean, that was one of the things that was brought up the day that the select board changed this recommendation from deconstruction to water bars. We have a stop our grandchildren from coming to Vermont. Now occasionally they show up because they don't understand it. We have no privacy because in the kitchen, we see all these cars, they can see everything, our bathroom, our kitchen, and day and night we get all these lights. By the way, when we lived in a suburb of Chicago, we never had anything like this.
I, I guess we, from my perspective, some of us need to go up there and look at it, see, see what, if there's anything we can do, what we can do.
I was over there, point in person, like. I, I was over there visiting with your folks there one time and talked about it. To put a ditch on the side of the road where your house is, you have a nice approach off from the road right into your driveway. And apparently, the water comes down through and goes into your driveway, I assume. Is that right?
Well, that's one of the many problems we have, and I've been sealing the driveway as much as I can because if water gets under, they blacked out. The retaining walls are gone.
A ditch could be cut along the side of the road, but it would not make it as nice for you to leave the road and go into your driveway. You, you would have, if you put a ditch on that side of the road to keep the water from getting into your driveway, it's going to mean that you're going to have to go through some kind of a little dip in order to get into your driveway, which right now it's nice and flat.
We gotta go look at it. We need to go, we need to go.
Takes a ton to hike here.
Yes.
I do think we need to take a trip up there together. I think, I've been up there. I've been up there already, but I think we all need to go up.
Yep.
All right. That's, that's, that's good.
Okay.
That was a class four road. It always has, has been a class four road for I don't know how long. And I've had some experiences in getting out timber in different townships where I do the class four road, and I've had to go in and do work to learn how to get in to get timber out. And I wasn't at a meeting here when it was talked about and they put the gates up. Had I been at that meeting, I would have brought that delight that you can't close a class four road without first having meetings. It has to be.
Joe, Joe, let me, I hate to say something.
Oh, go ahead.
When the gates went up, there were people in the meeting who knew you couldn't do it. They did it anyway. In my view, the select board was deliberately set up. And then when the gates were put in, they were put in in a way according to one individual that even a skinny person couldn't get around it. So the issue here is for 40-some years, this road was closed with dead-end sign on both. And there is, today there is no need for that road. Okay, so you, you keep doing that, Joe.
I, I don't, I'm not going to say there's no need for it.
Well, you show me what, why the town benefits from that road.
Because people live above you.
But they never needed it, they never asked for it. And they still have multiple road, Joe.
And they, they, having that road, it was a class four road, and it was never officially closed off and, and.
But the person who sold us the house thought it was closed.
It was never closed.
It was.
I understand the logic. I understand the official throwing it up. I understand that. But you made an exception in our case.
Was that road thrown up? Was that road thrown up?
Never.
Officially.
It's not, yeah.
I, I, I understand that. I do understand that. But that road was dead-end signed for 45 years, and you personally intervened because you didn't want to waste $8,000 of gravel for deconstructing the road, and the town has spent tens of times more since that time. So.
The beginning of, of the work that was done on that road, there was another project in that neighborhood somewhere, and they had a bunch of material left over. And I remember well, having the discussion that John Erickson, who was their road foreman at the time, suggested that we clean up wherever this other little project was and use that dirt, that when it was halfway decent road there, wasn't good gravel, but stuff left over, and use that to improve that Hupperton Road that you live on. And that, what happened apparently was he used that and then decided, I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, I didn't have anything to do with that decision, but apparently he must have decided that, well, this has helped it a lot. If he did run in a little more, it would make it even better. Now, I don't know who approved that. If it wasn't approved or was approved, I couldn't tell you. But there was some extra material brought in after they used up this stuff that they had left over, and then they added some more to it to, to finish the road out, so to upgrade it to a point where if there was a need for an emergency vehicle or anything to get through there, they could. That, that road, being a class four road, the other end of that road, once you get to the Fire Hill Road and you go across it, you can go clear to Hubbardon. That's still a class four road. That was all the same route. That road has never been, in, in my recollection, hasn't been fixed on Pittsburgh's side, but on Hubbardon's side, they did a lot of work on that. People built up in there. That, that's the old Hubbardon Road that went all the way across originally, many, back in the horse buggy days.
I think ultimately, though, we've got to discuss what we can do now, so we will go.
I think we should all take a round.
Look at, look at it. Okay? And then we'll get back to you and we'll let you know. Okay?
That's fine.
All right.
Fair enough, Rula. Okay.
Yes. Yeah, we'll live with the five and a half years.
All right. Well, thank you. This was a very, you know, well, put together presentation. I hope you don't mind us starting to discuss our next item while you're.
Leave and come back. Um, but I, we don't want to slow you down.
You're fine. You go ahead. You're, it's, it's not gonna be a disturbance.
Yeah, I mean, we need, we need to talk about this anymore. We need to go see the road. I mean, right, I mean, right now we're beating the dead horse and, and it's probably not gonna wake up. So they usually don't.
So we will move on to bridge lighting items.
They all look pretty much the same. I mean, they aren't, there isn't any drastic differences between them, really.
More aesthetics.
Kind of, I talked to Dave a little bit. Just wanna be careful what you put in there, the ear down the road, if you're gonna place glass. It wants something that's simple, just good-looking and official.
Yep.
Yeah. It wants to be an LED, the power code, stuff, and I was in that business for forty-seven years. I, I think that CMPL one, it's very plain. Uh, good-looking and it would.
Which option is that?
That's the, um, right off the board. And it has the, kind of the group top, just setting it up a little bit, but Scott Glassik would be replaced fairly easy.
Okay.
Well.
Yeah.
They're all acrylic. They're all acrylic.
The glass is white, it's acrylic. And they're all, they're all.
Can you just show me yours, your.
That one, well, no, this is powder coated, not metal, correct?
Well, you'd have to specify.
I think, um, I don't know what the powder. Uh, polyester powder.
Oh, okay.
Tom, which light are you suggesting?
It's option four of the, uh, CMP series LEDs.
Option four?
Yep. It's the CMPL one.
Yeah, I got it.
Now, I remember us being told we'd also have choice on like rails and colors and said rails.
In that email that I included in this, it was either to be galvanized or painted black.
Okay.
We wanted black to match.
Black, yeah, you don't want, not modern galvanized. The new stuff's good. Yeah.
We opted for black. The bridge, the new bridge.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, okay, so my only question, I guess, is, as you're coming down the hill towards that bridge, and you've got these LED lights, I mean, looking at this, it looks like it's not a clear, it's kind of a frosted. I'm just worried, and I'm sure the state has already figured this, well, is it gonna be blinding light coming from these lights? No? Okay, well, that's my only, I can see the angle you're coming out of at, you're gonna be looking right at. You're gonna be reflected on.
Yeah, they're not, there's not gonna be a lot of stray light in these anymore with their LED and.
Okay. Not on either side.
Have to look at the plans again. I'm not sure. I don't. On the ends and two in the middle. I mean, the bridge isn't that long.
I don't know.
My question, they just can't have any. So they, they want to. There was something done years ago at a meeting where the town asked for this option. That's what I did.
At one of the, well, the meeting.
Oh.
Where we wouldn't have.
Here, wasn't that?
We all liked, liked the better of them.
Yeah, I think Carolyn photo was.
Yeah, she was the engineer. Yeah, we did the lights.
I think you brought it up too at the big one at the school.
Yeah.
My dad told the story about some Halloween years ago, a bunch of rugged boys from down that neighborhood put somebody's buggy up on the top to cover the bridge on Halloween.
Rugged indeed.
You do it for that.
Wow, okay.
Ropes on and I've got it pulling right on.
Mills, you better keep an ID on that little electric car. That'd be easy to put up there.
Oh, I think it's heavier than you think.
Is this something we need to decide to vote on now?
I'll make a motion to do option four.
Yeah. Second, can you add black railing to that?
Yeah, black railing is black with black railing, yes.
It was a CNN.
CMPL fixture, yeah. CMPL, yeah.
Do we have a second on that?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Any further discussion? If they ever say aye?
Aye.
All right, then, uh, how about we vote on that budget that we worked on for quite, quite an extensive period of time?
What, what budget was that? Yeah, I know which one it is.
You're pulling your leg.
All right, and a motion to it.
I don't have a second, but I'll make a motion.
Operating is one million eight eighty-four thirty. And highway is one million one ninety-six four eighty-four.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, well, Kelly just stated, stated the not figures, so I think. All right, so yeah, um.
Did you want to do the motion like basically your article says that the budget is such and such and I mean, not to be right. It's like article.
Kelly stated the figures.
Yep, she did. So, um, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm, I'm aye, but I think you should read what's being raised by, you could read probably the.
You don't have a second either.
Oh.
No. No, yeah, no, I wanted a little discussion.
I know. Operating discussions of, I can't read this. Having gotten the bifocal.
Uh, voters authorized general fund expenditures for operating expenses of one million eight hundred and eighty thousand four hundred and thirty dollars of this, of which the sum of one million four hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and ninety-five is to be raised by property taxes and four hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars by non-tax revenues. And for the highway budget, authorized highway fund expenditures of one million one hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred and eighty-four, of which the sum of one million forty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-four is to be raised by property taxes. Yeah, a hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty by on tax.
You. Okay, so we had, we had a motion. We need a second.
I guess I read it. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? On favors say aye? Yeah, well.
Well.
No. All right, well, then that is the end of our open meeting.